Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the City Council meeting from February 22, 2011 to order. First thing as always is roll call and determination of the quorum. Charlene, if you would, please.
Peterson.
Here.
Wyffenbach.
Davis.
Here.
Hatcock.
Here.
Kroger.
Costello.
Here.
Quaker.
Wa.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
We do have quorum.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. Just a couple reminders before we start tonight. First of all, if you have a cellphone, we would please ask that you turn that off or into the vibrate mode. We'd certainly appreciate that, so you don't disrupt the proceedings. If you do need to take a phone call, we would ask that you just exit and actually go out in the hallway to take your phone call. We certainly appreciate that. Also, we do have speaker request forms to our right, to your left, over on the media table. If you have any issue that you'd like to speak to tonight, if you please fill that out with your name and also the item number, that way, as we make our way down the agenda, we'll make sure we do not overlook you. At this point, I would ask everyone to please rise for our invocation. Pastor Greg Blanc from the Calvary Chapel in Rapid City will be giving our invocation and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Good evening. On behalf of the church community, just want to say thank you again for your service and dedication to the city. And with that, that's great. Father, we opened this meeting inviting your presence here. We're thankful that you love the people of Rapid City and want what's best for them. As a community, we're grateful to the men and women you have appointed to govern us, given them wisdom as they carry the weight of knowing their decisions impact many people. We ask that you bless Mayor Hanks, the City Council member, the other officials here, and their families as they serve the great people of Rapid City. And we ask this in your name. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Pastor. Next thing on the agenda as always is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additional items that need to be added to tonight's agenda? Please turn on your light. Any additional items? Seeing none, the chair would look for a motion to approve the agenda as printed. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker. Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give the council a heads up that when it comes to the bill list, on page 128 of the bill list, there are five vouchers for the council timer. And I would like that discussed separately and us have the ability to express our concern and have leeway to offer a motion expressing concern regarding the process used to obtain these items.
Okay. We'll make sure that we take plenty of public comment right before the bill list, as always. Thank you. Any additional items to be added to the agenda? Seeing none. There again, motion on the floor, and we have a motion and a second. Is that correct, Charlene? And that motion is to adopt the agenda as printed. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the approval of the minutes. Chair would look for motion to approve the minutes of the February 7, 2011 regular council meeting.
Hold on a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to awards and recognitions, and I'm going to ask Paul to come join me here It's a popular guy, isn't he? Well, it's always a pleasure and truly an honor to recognize those that have served our country and defended our freedoms. And this month is no different. Let me just give you a little bit of background about this month's Veteran of the Month. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we're pleased to present the February 2011 Veteran of the Month recognition to Millen Paul Martinez, and I believe you go by Paul, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Paul participated in sports while growing up in Rapid City with his two brothers and one sister, receiving support and encouragement from his parents, Ida and... Does he go by Paul also?
He goes by Millen.
Millen. Millen Joe Martinez. Paul graduated from high school in 1967 and joined the United States Navy in March of 1968. He was honorably discharged in December 1971. He spent the first half of his service in the U.S. Navy in the K-9 Corps Special Forces Security, and he is also a combat veteran. He served in five campaigns. He and his dog Teddy, which I understand you have a picture of over on the table. Matter of fact, I would encourage everyone, if you have a chance, there's a lot of memorabilia Paul has over there, so please take a look at that. Him and his dog Teddy participated in many combat situations and saved lives of United States military personnel in Vietnam. He received the Bronze V for valor for one particular incident. When he departed his unit in Vietnam, he was presented with a Zippo lighter. Most people understand what a Zippo lighter is. Do you still have it?
Right here.
Oh, geez. With the engravement that reads, "M.P. Martinez, U.S. Navy, K-9, 68 through 70, led the life of a dog for 18 months." Very good. His last year and a half in the service was as a yeoman second-class petty officer in the Squadron V.C. II at the captain's office at Oceana Naval Air Station in Virginia Beach, Virginia in 1971. He had nerve and respiratory problems and was totally paralyzed for three years, from 1972 to 1975. Paul is a chapter member of the South Dakota Vietnam Veterans of American Firebase 463, in which he served as treasurer, secretary, and sergeant-at-arms. He expresses his appreciation for the support he has received by his friends, his family, including his wife Beatrice, his sons Daniel and Paul, and his daughter Lisa. Paul is to be commended for his service and his dedication to this city and to this country. Paul, congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I've got a few people I'd like to thank here. Mayor Hanks, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank all of you for being here. Please bear with me, I'm not one for giving speeches, as some of you know, so I'll keep this one short. I'm proud and grateful to live in the country, in the greatest country here on earth. I'm grateful for the military people and their families who sacrifice many, many who make the ultimate sacrifice so we can live free and all have a say in how our country is run. I'd like to thank Mayor Hanks and his staff for this honor and the award. I'd like to thank my friends and the President of the VVA, John Evans, for nominating me and anybody else who had a hand in helping me to receive this award. Most of all, I'd like to thank my family and dear friends for showing up here tonight to give their support to me. How blessed I am. I'm proud and humbled by all of your support. Thanks to all of you, from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Let's get a picture here, Paul. Thank you. You got... You got it right over here. Come on. Bring it up. We want to embarrass him. Come on.
My beating family up here. My daughter Lisa. My little son, Paul. And granddaughter, Todd. Todd, my cousin. My son, Paul. 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 Thank you, everyone.
And there again, it is truly an honor, not only for myself, but also for the City Council to recognize our Veterans of the Month. Thank you so much. And there again, don't forget, go over and take a look at the side table. Everyone's right there. I think you'd be very impressed and understand what sacrifice means. Chief, you want to come on up? And Steve, I see you there. We also have the pleasure of honoring a long-serving member of our city firefighters. And I can't hardly believe it, I had to double-check. Thirty years.
Yes, sir.
Wow. With that, Chief, I'm going to have you give a little bit of history about Steve's career in the fire service.
Thank you for those of you that have joined Steve tonight. This is an honor, certainly for me, to recognize Captain Steve Gillan for his 30 years of service to the city of Rapid City and to the Fire Department. And just to put that in perspective, Steve was fighting fires for the city of Rapid City when I was trying to figure out what I was going to be as a sixth grader in junior high, what I was going to wear to my first dance. So, didn't mean to throw that out there, Steve. But anyway, Steve was certainly one that we served on the same shift together. Steve was a senior firefighter when I began my career in Rapid City, so I certainly looked up to Steve over the years. And again, with 30 years of service, that's a tremendous benchmark for anybody to serve that long with the Fire Department. In 1981, Steve began his career with the Fire Department, and then in 1995, he was promoted to lieutenant in Operations Division, where he served as an engine company officer riding in the north side and west side of Rapid City. And then in 2003, he was again promoted to the rank of captain, which is our, begins our level of management for the Fire Department. In that capacity, he served the north side of Rapid City, managing Station 7. One of his biggest accomplishments as of late was to oversee the construction of new Station 7, and that's been going on for coming up on a year now. His attention to detail is really doing the department and the city a good job to make sure that project is done correctly. Kind of a side note, Steve was kind of a lucky guy, too. Early on in his career with the Fire Department, he was doing some part-time work and suffered a pretty severe logging accident where he laid out in the woods underneath a large tree. And just about, he isn't here today, but he got through it, definitely proved his toughness, and he's proven to be an outstanding asset to the city. So with that, I congratulate Steve in 30 years of service.
Thank you, everyone. Congratulations. Would you like to say a word to him? All your... Okay. With that, I'd just like to say thank you. I feel honored to be here. Chief, it's a privilege. You are the sixth fire chief that I've had the privilege to work for, so that's great. Also, with 30 years of service, I could talk all night about all the changes that we've done through the fire service in my career. But I really don't want to bore everybody with that. Some people wouldn't really understand some of that. But one thing that hasn't changed is our personnel. We still have the dedication of all the firefighters, and with those guys that have showed up tonight, I thank you. And my family, of course. Howard?
Howard.
Howard. Come on up. Come on. Yeah. Come on up. Come on. 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 And there was considerable discussion on this at the Solid Waste Committee, and it's, it's very possible that, once there is a comparative analysis between Rapid City and other cities, and also, once we determine what the, what the extent of the losses were that the city recently experienced, we may be able to reduce the rates going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar, we're on to the continued consent calendar, these are items 51 through 54, 51 through 54. And the Chair would ask if any of these items need, need to be removed from the consent calendar, I'm gonna go to Marcia. Nope, how about from the council? Seeing none, the Chair would look for a motion to approve the continued consent calendar, items 51 through 54, per the recommendation in the printed agenda. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you everyone. That does take us to the end of the continued consent items, we're on to the non-consent items, these are items 55 through 69 inclusive, 55 through 69 inclusive, Chair would look for a motion to open the public comment period on items 55 through 69 inclusive, please.
Go ahead.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I have no speaker request forms for items 55 through 69, this could be a short meeting tonight. I know, I probably just jinxed this, didn't I? Yeah, everybody's going, don't jinx this. I have no speaker request forms, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on any item 55 through 69 that has not turned in a speaker request form? If not, the Chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period on items 55 through 69 inclusive.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you everyone. We're on to ordinances, item number 55, we'll go to our Chairman of our Legal and Finance Committee, Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
55 is the first reading of ordinance number 5712, an ordinance requiring a disclosure statement be provided to owners of property when the City of Rapid City or the Rapid City Planning Commission is an applicant requesting the property to be rezoned by amending section 17.54.040 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 56. Oh, I am so sorry, Mr. Jordan, are lights not working? Okay. Did you have a discussion on that last item?
Yes.
Okay. Chair would look for a motion to reconsider item number 55, please.
Sorry.
We have a motion, second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Evidently, we're having problems, because you're about the third person who's tried to push, and we're not getting the lights. I'm gonna try and look up and down the dais, if I happen to miss you, just, you know, give me a signal. Okay, Deb, would you go ahead and read in item number 55 again?
55 is the first reading of ordinance number 5712, an ordinance requiring a disclosure statement be provided to owners of properties when the City of Rapid City or the Rapid City Planning Commission is an applicant requesting the property be rezoned by amending section 17.54.040 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on the motion, Jordan, try your light one more time here, would you? There it came on, okay. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you Mayor, and I do apologize for the problem there, technical difficulties. I did just want to clarify in a section in here, I did have a question for our city attorney. Is it correct in that, how I'm reading this, that the application fees for any subsequent rezoning, conditional use, and so forth, does that also apply to the city as well in the application process?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Well, the city doesn't generally pay application fees, it would be a redundant exercise for us to take money out of the general fund just to put it back in. So, I think the reference to application fees are the best estimate of future application fees that someone might be required to pay once the rezoning takes place.
Thank you, I guess why I'm asking is that, given that most of this ordinance is directed at, and as the title states, for, for the city and the zoning, our planning commission, that I just, I found it odd to see that language in there, so, I was just wondering if there was...
Mr. Green.
My understanding of the genesis of this language is that the individual who's brought it forward wants the city to make an estimate of what the cost would be to someone who lives in the area, if they wanted to come in and seek rezoning of their property after the city's proposal becomes effective. So, I don't think this is an attempt to have the city pay any fees or anything like that, it's just an attempt to provide information to people that live in the areas, is my understanding.
Thank you, that's, that's much more clear for me, and I appreciate that, and thank you for the patience.
Thank you, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Thank you, I appreciate you explaining that, Jason, because that's exactly what it is, it came about with some of the fees and some of the things that we just needed to have a little more full disclosure on, when we do future land use. So, they know all the information, that'd be fees, how it works, just a better explanation for the public. So, this was, Mr. Freytag worked hard on this with Jason's office, and Marcia, and some of our council members, so I appreciate him coming forward with this, again, it's, it's about full disclosure, so, thank you, Alder and Mason.
Thank you, the motion on the floor is for approval, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 56, please.
Number 56 is first reading of ordinance 5709 supplemental appropriation number four for 2011, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman Ron Waifunbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd appreciate it if Pauline could give us a quick explanation of how a supplemental appropriation like this affects our budgets.
Okay, let's go to Pauline Sumpton, who is our city finance officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A supplemental appropriation, in September of each year, we, the council approves an appropriation ordinance for the ensuing calendar year, which is also our fiscal year, so, in the general fund, we approved about $45 million, I believe, as far as the general fund budget is concerned. This supplement, there's an additional $420,000 that would be added to that general fund budget, so then it would be $45,420,000 would be the total budget, if it were just this supplement, but remember, there's three supplements prior to it, but this is added to the budget that was already approved for the calendar year, or the fiscal year, which is the same.
Okay, Mr. Waifunbach, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pauline.
Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is for approval, dealing with item number 56, which is first reading of ordinance number 5709. See no further lights, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 57, please.
Number 57 is first reading ordinance number 5710, an ordinance to annul the use of teleconference meetings in special circumstances by adding section 2.08.025 to the Rapid City Municipal Code as amended, and I move approval.
Do we have a second, please? Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello. Mike, please.
Thank you, if I may, I see Jason Green's light, I'd like to yield to him.
Absolutely, we can certainly, let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a clarification, the motion is to approve the version of the ordinance as recommended by Legal and Finance, is that correct? Thank you.
Very good, everyone clear on that motion? Thank you. Now, let's go to, and just for a point of clarification, typically, what happens is, if I have a staff member who turns on their lights, I usually go to the elected official first, and then I'll go back to the staff person, so, with that, let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At Legal and Finance, I voiced my concerns over this ordinance, both from a privacy at executive session standpoint, and an efficiency standpoint for us here at the dais. I still haven't been convinced that either of those problems are, either of my issues with that are invalid. The issue of trust was brought up, and unfortunately, that was executive sessions, that's become a reality in my short tenure here at the dais. Another aspect where trust plays in then, is that if, one of the selling points of this ordinance is so that we can properly represent our constituents, the question comes to my mind, if there are two of us from each ward in this city, do we then not trust our counterpart to act, you know, in a matter of course with what's best for our wards? So, I guess I'd just like to be enlightened on those issues, if I may, I yield to the floor.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is for approval, per the version that was forwarded by Legal and Finance, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, in dealing with the ordinance, I also have a question, that I suppose would be better directed to our city attorney. Jason, as I read this, and I remember emailing this to you earlier, but I'm still unclear as to what qualifies as to those special circumstances, what defines that? Is there some sort of definition?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. As amended, there really are no more special circumstances involved, I think the title is sufficient, though, for the purpose for which the ordinance is intended. As written, though, the ordinance is very broad, it says, "Any Alderman may attend meetings at the Council, Legal and Finance Committee, or Public Works," there's no requirement for a showing of special circumstances anymore.
Thank you, I guess I'm still seeing the older version, then.
There should be two links, if you go to the...
Oh, appreciate that, sorry about that.
Just for clarification, the title remains the same on the ordinance, so that it's still in the title, but the amended version does not contain special circumstances.
Very good. And there again, just for a point of clarification, on the electronic version, there is basically two, there's your ordinance, and there's an ordinance recommended by Legal and Finance Committee, the motion on the floor is one that is very specific, that was recommended by Legal and Finance. Further discussion, Mr. Green, did you have anything else? Okay, very good, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, if an Alderman is allowed to attend a meeting by teleconference, would the mayor also be allowed to attend a meeting by teleconference? Not necessarily to chair it, but to cast a vote in case of a tie?
Mr. Green.
I think that would be permissible, yes.
So, could, could we put that in here?
Certainly.
Can I offer an amendment, or am I not, am I allowed to offer an amendment at this point, Mayor?
Yes, you are allowed to offer an amendment.
I'd like to, I'd like to offer, offer an amendment that this would also apply to the mayor.
Okay, we have a mo, we have an amendment, do we have a second to that amendment?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend, discussion on that motion? Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Mr. Green, let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Just, just for, to give you a heads up, assuming that the amendment is approved, I will probably propose some revised language at Legal and Finance that can come forward. Just doing this on the fly is probably not the best way, but I don't see any problem with the proposed amendment in this form at this time.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is to amend, that's what we're dealing with, just the amendment only. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're back to the original motion as amended, everyone clear on that motion, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
My apologies, Mayor, I do have one more suggestion, since the council is looking at removing the special circumstances entirely, I think that it probably would be appropriate at this point to amend the title, or simply be, allow the use of teleconference meetings by amending, or by adding the section of the municipal code, so it would be, delete the words "in special circumstances" from the title. Since this is first reading, you could make that amendment at this point, and it would not slow the process down.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second to amend the title. Deb Hadcock made the motion, Dave Davis seconded the motion. Everyone clear on the motion? What we're voting on here is a motion to amend the title, so this will be another amendment. Okay, everyone clear on that motion? And that amendment, just so everyone's clear, would be striking and removing "in special circumstances." All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're back to the original motion as amended twice. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
Let's do a quick roll call, please.
Kroger. Costello.
No.
Quaker.
Aye.
Wa. Brown. Mason. Peterson. Waifunbach. Davis.
Okay, motion passes on a six to four vote, so that will go back to Legal and Finance for its second reading as amended. Okay, thank you for the discussion, everyone. Item number 58, please.
58 is the second reading of ordinance number 5711, an ordinance to amend prohibited acts at the Rapid City Public Library by amending section 9.04.030 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of ordinance number 5711, dealing with item number 58, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you. We're on to Growth Management Items, item number 59, please.
59 is a request by Davis Engineering Incorporated for a preliminary plat located east of Reservoir Road and on the south side of Longview Road, and approve with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations, dealing with item number 59, which is preliminary plat. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 60, please.
Item 60 is a request by Wolverton and Associates for THF Stone Ridge Development LLC for a preliminary plat located northwest of the intersection of Fifth Street and East Dummer Road, and approve with revised stipulations.
Do we have a second, please? We have a motion and a second to approve with revive, with revised stipulations, any discussion on that motion? We're dealing with item number 60, which is a preliminary plat. Marcia, did you have any comments? Mike, please.
Yes, if I could, please. There are several changes here that have been made since the planning commission considered this, it's unusual for us to bring these forward, but we thought it was important to do it in this case. As you'll note, we've recommended there be modifications to the property boundary between lots one and two of block four to be allowed. We've been working with an adjacent property owner who would like to see some revisions to the plan that would result in a retaining wall being significantly reduced, if not eliminated, and that's to the benefit of the adjacent property owner. The applicant has been willing to work with them, and I believe we've almost worked out an agreement, so that that can go forward, so we'd like the flexibility to do that. In addition, in item one, realized this afternoon in visiting with the Public Works staff, that the plans that had been submitted are not stamped for final construction plans, so we were asking for a minor modification in stipulation one. And then also, if you look down at item number four, the applicants asked that we remove the vacation requirement for the utility easement, Public Works staff was agreeable to that. So, it is somewhat unusual, but we'd like to ask for your approval with revised stipulations as we presented them this evening.
Thank you. Further discussion or questions? Motion on the floor is for approval with revised stipulations, dealing with item number 60. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 61, please.
Item 61 is a request by FMG Engineering for a move law for Rapid City LLC for a layout plat located west of Haynes Avenue, south of Dis Drive, and north of Interstate 90, and I approve with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations, dealing with item number 61. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 62, please.
62 is approved destination Rapid City's request to move downtown sidewalk vending location number one to the southeast corner of Main and Sixth Street, and move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman Ron Waifunbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I had a question on this item, why we're moving it and where we're moving it to, it seemed that there was some strategic planning that went into effect on this, and I'm just trying to get my arms around it, so if, I guess if someone could explain that to me.
Okay, did you want to ask somebody specific, or should we just ask the generic question out there? Marcia, can you, or maybe...
Maybe Marcia can answer, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's go to Marcia.
Not sure.
Marcia Elkins, Growth Management Director.
Thank you. My understanding is that Destination Rapid City came forward with a request that went to the Legal and Finance Committee to ask for the relocation of the loc, specific location of number one. Staff had worked on this previously, we had looked at various locations throughout the community in the downtown area to make sure that there was adequate room on the sidewalks for the vendor carts, that there was clearance for ADA requirements, and that there was not a conflict with the entryway to doors, or other fire hydrants and other similar facilities, also trying to eliminate any potential conflict with what we would anticipate for sidewalk cafes. The discussion came forward, and staff from Public Works and Growth Management went out, reviewed the downtown locations, identified several possible locations that could be used instead of item number one, location number one, and visited with Mr. Ashley, who had been in the process of submitting a request for that location. He was agreeable to the change, and in visiting with Dan Sefner from Destination Rapid City, they were also agreeable, so that is why it came forward to the committee and was recommended for approval.
Okay, Mr. Waifunbach, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that, and I was at Legal and Finance, and one of the things that came up when, when they found these areas, where they're gonna put these vending, was specific locations adjacent to particular businesses and those types of items, things, and trying to strategically locate them, and the question that came up, this one's located right across from a restaurant, that is a full-time operation downtown, so, and then my other question, so, the reason they're moving the other one is it's not ADA accessible or big enough to be used, so that's a twofold question. I guess the first question would be, do we give those people the same consideration when we decided to move this across the street from them?
Very good, did you, Marcia?
If I could, the location that's been identified on Sixth Street is actually across from the new offices of the Gunderson Palmer Law Firm, the old Headlines Academy, so I'm not aware of a restaurant being located across the street from it. And then, secondly, the other part of the question was, we did look at the location, again, the driveway locale that's being moved for the parking garage, and the location of the fire department hookup, some of the improvements are being made there, including the curbing that's being installed around the tree locations, all of that made that a very tight location, and so, my understanding is Public Works staff and Growth Management staff went out and looked at that site and felt that it was not adequate.
Yep, Mr. Waifunbach, you still have the floor.
I must have been mistaken on this location, and it's not across from the Silver Spoon Restaurant.
No, it's located on the east side of the Negabauer Jewelry Store.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Let's see, let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank staff for this, I spoke to both Mr. Sefner and Mr. Ashley, and both of them followed up and said that this, the process was seamless, and it was well done, and I just want to commend staff, thank you.
Thank you for that. Motion on the floor is for approval, any discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 63, please.
63 is a confirm appointment of Jessica Hahn to the Beautification Committee to fill the unexpired term of David Butler for a term to expire December 31st, 2011, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion, and I believe Mr. Costello is going to be abstaining because she is a colleague.
That is exactly right, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval, any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, with Alderman Costello abstaining. Thank you, everyone. Item number 64, please.
Item 64 is a request the mayor to direct staff to make appropriate changes to the wards and precincts by adding annexed areas, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I think Ms. Pauline was gonna show us those areas for the publics.
Okay, very good. Do we have the overheads working?
No, not with my computer, it does not work, and I did not bring a hard copy that's small enough to fit on here, I do have a large map. The areas, one is off of Sheridan Lake Road, one looks like it is off of Jackson Boulevard, and then another is out Highway 44.
Pauline, why don't you have Marcia help you do a Vanna out there, and...
I was gonna say if I could fit it on my computer.
Okay, if you could just point out for everyone, can everyone see that? Okay?
This is the same one as attached.
Okay.
So, this is the one that was at the gas station. And then, that's the whole work area, and then the Sheridan Lake Road.
Very nice. I'll take an A. An A. A. Very good, and Dave, what I'll ask you to do is, if you could please make sure that you attach basically, either the link or basically a copy of that map when we actually, before we rebroadcast it, I appreciate that, thank you, Dave. Okay, further discussion, let's go to Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to commend Dave on his fantastic cinematography skills, I watched up here, he followed that map dead on as he was panning across.
He's getting good at that joystick, yes. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval, item number 64. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Pauline bids, you do have overhead, right?
Yes. I do have overhead on this one. Number 65, the first bid is for Cannon Lake Drive Reconstruction Project, and I have to turn a little bit here, we did have three bidders on the project, the advertising authority was $9,720,000, with the engineer's estimate actually coming in at $10,100,000. The recommendation is to award the base bid plus the alternate bid in the amount of $9,094,828.03 to RCS Construction, Inc.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award to RCS Construction, Inc. for the base bid plus alternate one, correct?
Correct.
Okay, for a grand total of $9,094,828.03.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion, second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That was nice, we just saved a million dollars. Next item.
Next bid is for the pavement rehabilitation project number one, Sheridan Lake Road Project. The advertising authority on this was $110,000, with the engineer's estimate coming in at We received three bids on this project, recommendation is to award the base bid plus the alternate bid in the total amount of $136,803.90 to Simon Contractors of South Dakota, Inc.
We have a motion and a second to award the contract to Simon Contractors of South Dakota, Inc., which is the base bid plus the alternate bid for a grand total of $136,803.90. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, we only saved $3,000 on that one.
$3,000 is still $3,000.
That's right.
The next bid is for the pavement rehabilitation project number two, Lakota Homes Project. The advertising authority on this project was $345,000, with the engineer's estimate coming in at $343,761.50. We had three bidders on this project as well, the recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of $279,699.21 to Hills Material Company.
Do we have a motion, please? We have a motion and a second to award this to Hills Materials Company for a grand total of $279,699.21. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We saved $64,000. We're having a good night. Yeah, okay, last one.
Final bid is for the Anamosa Street Reconstruction, Haynes Avenue to Midway Street. These are the utility portions only, if I am not mistaken. The engineer's estimate on this project was $635,949. We had, looks like, seven bidders on this project. The recommendation is to actually concur with the South Dakota Department of Transportation's award of the total bid in the amount of $590,956.50 to Highmark, Inc.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and the motion on the floor is to concur with the South Dakota Department of Transportation to award the bid to Highmark for a grand total of $590,956.50. The reason we're doing this is, this is actually a state DOT project. We are doing a joint project, and we will be replacing the utilities, and that's the only portion that we're responsible for. I think this is about a $3.2 million project, is that correct, Robert? And the city is responsible for $600,000. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Since we're saving so much money tonight on this road construction, I was hoping that Mr. Ellis could find in his heart to add East Ohio Street on this list. My neighbor's got open accounts at Royal Wheel Alignment, so.
Very good. Additional comments, let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Actually, I was going to echo that. Since you have so much money, you can come in to award two, and we have a bunch of projects you can use that since you've got three and four here, Robert Ellis. I'd also like to, we have the honor of having Kay Reckentropf in the room today with us, a forty-year secretary that worked in the mayor's office. So glad to see you here checking out our meetings, Ms. Kay.
Thank you. It is always a pleasure to see Kay. I think she told me it was eleven mayors. Eleven different mayors she worked for.
That is very.
That it is. Okay, a motion on the floor is to concur with the South Dakota Department of Transportation's award of a total bid to Highmark, Inc., for the grand total of $590,956.50, and this is the city's portion of the project. And let's see, we did have a motion and a second, is that correct? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. And we just saved $45,000. That's always nice. Thank you, everyone. That does take us through the bids. There are no items under Mayor's Items or Council Liaison. We're on to item number sixty-nine. This is Presidential Plaza Funding. This was continued from the January 18th, 2011 council meeting, and Mr. Vulcan, who is going to give a presentation here? And there again, Mr. Vulcan, if you could just please identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Brian Vulcan, I'm President of Forefront Design, and I'm representing the St. Joe Investment Group tonight. As the representative of the St. Joe Investment Group, I want to thank you for the opportunity to update you on the progress of President's Plaza. You've asked our group to come forward and update you on the financial aspects of this project, as well as its salient features. St. Joe Investment Group has worked closely with members of the mayor and his staff and council leadership to come to the best possible arrangement with the city for what is most advantageous to the citizens of Rapid City through a well-thought-out master developer agreement. The entire team has worked tirelessly to move this project along, and we thank you for that positive effort. The project includes additional parking for the city of Rapid City, additional downtown retail and dining opportunities, and more living space for Rapid City residents who want to live and be part of a vibrant downtown. While we're not able to give you everything that you asked for at this time, I can say the project is moving forward in a positive and straightforward manner. The development of this property on the corner of Sixth and St. Joe has been attempted in earnest for at least five years. With fits and starts, successes and setbacks, the St. Joe Investment Group has brought this project to the brink of reality. Over the last two and a half years, developing any property has been almost impossible. Even here in Rapid City, the economy has pulled back. New businesses are hesitant to make any long-term commitment, and expansion of existing businesses has been slow and cautious. We are in the midst of one of the worst banking environments in U.S. history. Nonetheless, we believe we can bring this project to a reality for our community. Over the last couple of months, we have gone through an extensive validation of our assumption, verified cost, and analyzed the overall state of the project. We then questioned the very structure of the St. Joe Investment Group. At the end of that validation and verification process, we concluded that perhaps the project would be best served if it had had a more local development leader. Someone that is not only, has not only have experience in this type of development, but the substantial means to make the banks comfortable during this troubled period. We had discussions with a number of prominent local development groups to test our ideas. We found that this project is financially sound and desperately needed and wanted and anticipated by our community in every aspect. This is a positive project. Throughout our involvement, the St. Joe Investment Group has from time to time confirmed with Mr. Hanny Shaffey about what worked in his earlier project and what was less successful. Because of his help, we were able to pick up this project and proceed from where he had left off and move it forward. Our group persevered and overcame one obstacle after another. Even so, we're not being able to bring this project across the line. So in the end, we settled on the obvious. We asked Mr. Shaffey of Dream Design International, teamed with Premier Properties and Mr. Pat Hall, to help make President's Plaza a reality. For over two years, Hanny has been very accommodating and giving of ideas. During that time, his objectives were clear: to make our project a success. Pat brings a new energy and resources to this local marketplace. We're very happy that they agreed to take the lead and join forces with the President's Plaza Group to make this project a successful Rapid City. This does add new members to the St. Joe Investment Group, but the basic organization stays intact. I like the analogy that it's like adding a new engine to your car. It's still the same car, but now we have a brand-new, high-performance engine powering it. At this time, we're not able to provide you with the financing commitment that you've been asking for, because there's a few details to be worked out. Therefore, the St. Joe Investment Group requests additional time to produce the financing commitment and a more complete schedule for you. With this major addition to our team, we are comfortable saying that we will meet and exceed all of the objectives set out for this project, and we will complete it in an efficient and timely manner. With that, we would like to request another ninety days to work with your representatives on the satisfaction of your financial concerns and design criteria. Our intent is to maintain a constant and open dialogue between this group and your representatives, as we have all along. Hanny, Pat, and I are available to answer your questions.
Thank you. Discussion questions from the council members. And let's go to Alderman Erin Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be abstaining from discussion on this item, as my employer's involved in the project.
Very good. Thank you for that. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. To get the discussion rolling, I'd make a motion that we allow another ninety-day extension to be able to get the information that we have asked for. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to grant a ninety-day extension. Jason, is that how we want to state it? A ninety-day extension. Discussion on that motion. Mr. Kroger, did you want to retain the floor?
No, I'm good.
Okay, let's go to Alderman, let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
It's an appropriate time, Mr. Mayor, to offer an alternate motion.
You can certainly make a substitute motion.
I would like to make a substitute motion to allow 180 days for the same purpose, so that the new group has adequate time and is not put under the gun like this current one has been, that they are able to analyze, regroup, verify the funding, and bring us data that is accurate and ready to go, and give them plenty of time to do that.
Okay, we have a motion, a motion and a second, which is a substitute motion to grant a 180-day extension. Discussion on the substitute motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm fine with whatever timeframe. I don't know that if we put timeframes in place that they would be appropriate or not. Anyway, I've been, had conversations with the St. Joe Investment Group on several occasions, and in the turn of what they're doing now. They, at one time, I think when we first started this project with Rushmont and those, we had like a committee of members, Mr. Mayor, that I think a couple of them were with the council, and I think Mr. Costello happened to be on that committee, and now that he is working for the St. Joe Investment Group, I think it would be appropriate, Mr. Mayor, if at some point you or whoever takes another council person and maybe puts them in that committee, if they could be part of this process going forward. I mean, I don't necessarily know if there's a timeframe involved, unless somewhere along the line, looking at this, if the project makes sense, I think it's going to happen, if it can cash flow, and talking to the people involved, and asking, does this thing work? Yes, it works. And understanding the environment that they have to find the funding availability for this type of a business. I mean, if we don't do this thing, then it ends up as empty as a parking lot is right now. I think that the 3.8 or whatever it's put aside to build the project is not going to be appropriate to build anything that's going to be acceptable for down there. The TIF money that's in place expires in a specific amount of time. I think it's, that's what TIF money was made for. If anything, it's probably the most appropriate use of a TIF in a city. So if it's 90, 180, I don't really care. I just think that if the project's going to go forward, and they're working with the committee that originally started it, to get this project from a vision to an ideal state, I think that that would probably be the most appropriate approach to take, and understanding that the city's going to be behind them 100% moving forward to get something done down there that makes sense and works and actually cash flows, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Alderman Wyffenbach, you bring up a very good point, and just for a point of clarification, since Mr. Costello did take a position with Forefront, which is one of the partners in the St. Joe LLC, he has been abstaining, and he has not attended any of the meetings, and I think you're exactly right. It's probably appropriate, and at the next Legal and Finance Committee meeting, what I'll plan on doing is bringing forward a couple of names of alternate council people to serve on this committee.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I just think if they're part of the process, it keeps the council and basically the citizens in what's going on. I mean, I'm sure it's limited, and they're not going to be able to get into the financial aspect of it, I understand that, but at least they know where everybody's at on the project.
Very good. It was a very good point. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to direct a question to Mr. Hall or Mr. Shaffey, if I may.
Why don't you go ahead and state your question, then we'll see who wants to answer your question.
As investors moving into this project, would you have any problem getting a financial commitment within 90 days?
And Mr. Hall or Mr. Shaffey? Or I guess I would open it up to Mr. Vulcan. Mr. Shaffey, please identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Hanny Shaffey, President of Dream Design International. We are going to be working a lot of details with the city, staff, and the city council and council leadership over the next probably few weeks, and we will be giving you some updates, probably on a monthly basis, not just till the end. And those updates will include some banking commitments, and of course, you know, no bank will give you 100% guarantee in anything until the project is ready to be constructed, but there will be some banking relationships and communications with you folks to alleviate some of the concerns that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mason, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I guess in response to Mr. Davis's motion, I was looking for some sort of clarification on why we're doubling the timeline for getting the financial commitment. I guess I would direct that question to Alderman Davis.
Very good. Mr. Davis, would you like to answer that? If so?
I'd be happy to, and thank you, Jordan, for the question. There's a couple of issues in that. Number one, we've watched over the last few months, the project as it currently stands, bumping up against this wall, and then the scrutiny becoming the question that literally what was being asked was, show us the money. And legitimate question, but in the current economic environment, I don't think you're going to find a financial institution that comes forward, at least from my investigation, and wants to go on the line saying, I'm there, when in fact, all the paperwork is not signed, and in fact, everyone is there. So in fact, it's been my understanding that if we press a financial institution to come forward prior to the close of, so to speak, that we may in fact spook the financing on a project. My point with 180 days is twofold. Number one is to give them plenty of time to adequately regroup and bring forth a project that everyone can move forward with. And number two is very simply, 90 days will put us about two weeks before the election. I think this project is far more important to everyone involved in this city than to have it become a political hot potato at the first part of June, when the election is upon us, and it get it bannered around and beat up and possibly ruin the project, rather than complete a project. So I'm very, very concerned from both sides, and I'm using your time, and I'm sorry to be using that, Jordan.
I appreciate that, Mr. Davis. I guess the reason that I'm asking is that, as Mr. Vulcan stated earlier, this is on and off for five years, so I guess I understand the perspective of wanting to give plenty of time with a new team together to move forward, but I don't want to make this a decade-long project by doubling this into ten years anytime soon. So I guess I would also welcome your recommendations, but I do want to keep a stiff eye on how this is moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Let's go to Alderman Bill Watt.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one comment, and I have a question for Mr. Vulcan, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
The comment is, I'm in favor of the extension. I think with a project of this magnitude, I think, to be fair to all parties involved, we need to give them the adequate time to move forward on financing. And then my question for Mr. Vulcan is, you talked about putting a new engine in the automobile. Has the automobile changed dramatically?
Mr. Vulcan, please identify yourself for the record.
I'm Brian Vulcan with the St. Joe Investment Group. That's a great question. No, it really hasn't. There's a number of things that were put in place in the previous project. When Hanny had first brought his project forward, the main thing he put in place was a TIF. That's a key building block to that. And then he ran into a number of obstacles that, at that time, just didn't have the answers to get over them. So we picked it up from there and took those, all those challenges on, and knocked them down one by one, and we memorialized those in this master developer agreement. That's a very, very important document. It took a lot of hard work and many months to put in place, and it overcame almost all of those obstacles that we encountered at that time. And then we added in the new market tax credits. All of those things are still in place. The one thing that we just cannot do is, in this banking environment, offer the bank the stability and the resources that it needs to feel comfortable going forward. We needed to find somebody that could give them that level of assurance, and we believe this team can. So that's why we're so happy to do this. You know, this is a, we put a lot of our personal capital, I mean, our personal time and effort, and everybody on our team wants to see this project go forward. It would be a travesty not to see it go forward. And whether we do it, or Mr. Hall and Mr. Shaffey do it, it makes no difference to us. We want to see what's best for the project go forward. So we're taking what we've all built so far and advancing it. So yes, I think it is the same car. We've got some new legs under it, and it's going to make a huge difference.
Thank you, Mr. Watt.
Thank you, Mr. Vulcan. No other comments. I do look forward to regular reports on the progress through whomever the committee will be that will be working with the group, but I applaud what you're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be supportive of this motion and that, because I have seen Mr. Hall and Mr. Shaffey in the past be able to put projects together, especially come up with financing. I hope that this extension will end up being the last one, and I think if anybody can get it done in that time, you gentlemen can get it done. I'd like to give this one note of caution, though. Some people are being very tired, and certainly the public is, of keep extending, extending, extending. So the pressure's on you, ball is certainly on your court, and I hope you run like hell with it and get us those reports, and we'll see in 180 days.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question for Jason.
Go ahead, please.
Jason, on this paperwork with the St. Joe Company, is this legally transferable with adding new partners on it?
Let's go to Jason Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The agreement that the city has-
The, the agreement that the city has is with an entity called St. Joe Development LLC, I believe. It doesn't matter who the members are, the legal entity exists separate from the members, so there's no transfer problem that the city needs to be concerned about at this point.
Okay. And that'd be with the TIF, tax credits, and the things that you've seen for financing so far, except for the bank?
Well, the, the TIF exists, but there is no developers agreement that's in place yet, so that can be put in place at a later date, once, once the project is in a position to move forward. As for the tax credits, I presume that's something that the LLC has been involved with, and if not, then I'm sure that they're gonna get the people lined up that have worked on those. Those are federal tax credits, so that's not something the city's been involved with to this point.
Okay. And by chance, do you know when that TIF expires?
April 2012.
That sounds right.
That kinda moves us forward in a sense, too. So that TIF expires, I don't know if we can expand it or, or move it forward or extend that as well, but that kinda gives them a little bit of a deadline as well. I'm not tired of extensions on this project, because this is a big project. I've worked with the downtown a long time, and we've waited over 30 years to get some stuff done. And with Destination Rapid City and other projects downtown, they are moving forward. So extensions do not bother me. It's in the sense, if they're extended because they are not having answers, that's when there becomes some issues. So I'm looking forward to getting updated on these, on this project. 180 days, I think, gives it sufficient time to get moving forward and get things in place and get a nice business plan for, for the citizens of Rapid City and this council. Like I said, it's, it's gonna be a great project when it's done. Presidential Plaza is a great name, and it's something good for downtown, and I've been supporting the downtown for a long time, and they've done some good things. I think that's about it. Again, good luck, and, and I hope this project becomes very successful. I know it will help the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Saturday, my wife sent me a text on the phone that had a picture of her laying out by the pool in downtown Dallas, Texas. But just to take a moment, and, and she, well, she was in Texas, and she was downtown, and, and she made the comment that Rapid City's downtown is, in her, in areas was better than what has been happening in Dallas, Texas. And they have a move down there right now to, to better their downtown. So I just wanted to take this time to, to, to thank all the people that have been involved in the project from the very beginning. There's people that didn't get the project awarded, there's people that, but they had visions. And, and I think Mr. Vulcan had talked a little bit earlier about how the project progressed. Each person brought something to the table, and we're back to this position. And I understand it gets weary and whatever, but when you're talking about this kind of money, I know I ain't laying it out. So it's important to get it right, and it's important to make sure it works, make sure it cash flows, and make sure that all those, those building blocks are in place to build something that's gonna be long-lasting and sustainable, so, thank you. I just wanted to thank them, the people that are, that are bringing it forward, the people that have in the past that have worked on the project and with the vision of Rapid City and making it a beautiful downtown, so, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate all the discussion, and I also appreciate Alderman Watt's question regarding the, the car staying basically the same. I think it's important that if the schematic for this project changes fundamentally from what was originally presented and awarded by the city council, that there, that that come forward for council discussion and approval, because otherwise, we're going to run into a situation where citizens of Rapid City are going to look at that, and other applicants are going to look at that and, and question the fairness of it. So I, I would, I'm just wondering, as, as part of the presentation process, Mr. Hall and Mr. Shaffey, if, if you guys could keep us posted on, on if there's going to be any proposed changes to the, to the drawings that were, that were presented. I'm sure there'll be some changes, but if there's any large fundamental changes that will alter the, the look of the project and the feel of the project, I think it's important that we, we all know.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to substitute motion to grant an extension for 180 days. Any further discussion? Seeing no the light, just no more lights. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes with Alderman Costello abstaining. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to item, as we're onto the public hearing items, items 70 through 76 inclusive. And the chair will look for motion, open the public comment period on items 70 through 76 inclusive, please.
No motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. I have no speak request forms on any items 70 through 76 inclusive. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to any of these items? Seeing none, please keep in mind, we do keep the public comment period open during this part of the agenda. So we're on to the continued public hearing consent items, items 70 through 72. And I will ask if any of these items, 70 through 72 inclusive, need to be pulled from the consent calendar. Marcia? Nope? How about from the council? Seeing none, chair will look for motion to approve the continued public hearing consent items, items 70 through 72 inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. This takes us to the end of the, end of the continued public hearing consent items. Chair will look for motion to close the public hearing items for items 70 through 76 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to the consent public hearing items. These are items 73 through 75 inclusive. Do any of these items need to be pulled from the consent calendar? Do you want to, Jason Green or Pauline? We're good. Item 73 through 75?
73 needs to be pulled, please.
I'm sorry, which one?
73, please.
73, thank you. Any additional items? If not, the chair will look for a motion to approve the consent public hearing items, items 74 and 75.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deb, could you read an item number 73, please?
73 is...
Mike, please.
Thanks, Mayor. 73 is St. Slank LLC, DBA Murphy's Pub and Grill, 510 Ninth Street, for retail on-sale liquor transfer from First National Bank Rapid City, DBA Murphy's Bar, 510 Ninth Street. And I move to continue till April 4th.
We have a motion and a second to continue this to the April 4th city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar. We're on to the non-consent hearing, uh, public items, item number 76, please.
76 is an appeal of the planning commission decision on a quest by Wolverton and Associates for THF Stone Ridge Development LLC for a final commercial development plan to allow commercial uses including on-sale liquor establishments located northeast of intersection of Stumer Road and Black Hills Boulevard. And I move approval with revised stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with revised stipulations. Let's go to Marcia for explanation of the revised tips.
This is similar to the previous item that you were considering, the plat for this project. Again, we've asked for modifications so that staff may approve changes in the design to accommodate the removal of the wall, which is to the advantage of the adjacent property owner.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second for approval with revised stipulations. Let's go to Alderman, Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question for Marcia is, are we getting through everything we need to do, and is there a timeline for construction on this project?
Marcia?
I would defer to the applicant's representative in terms of the timeframe. Yes, I believe we're working through all the issues and working hard to make sure that we've got all the pieces ready to go for the plat to be, uh, final plat approved. And again, the tax increment financing district, which is related to this, will be before the planning commission shortly.
Okay. Mr. Weifenbach, you have the floor, sir.
I guess if it's continued upon that, it would make no sense to ask the question. Thank you.
Okay. Motion on the floors for approval with revised stipulations. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Onto the bill list. Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The total bill list presented to you is $5,531,673.62, and we do have two additions. The first one is to J&amp;J Asphalt in the amount of $2,570.70. The second one is to the downtown bid board. It's the bid revenue less than 1% admin fee of $163,553 for a grand total of $5,697,797.32.
And could we have a motion, please? And that is as amended, as presented, correct? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Quaker? Go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we have separate consideration of the five items on page 128 relating to the, the timer?
What's the numbers of Sam?
Um, it's page 128, and it's Alpha Video and Audio ID numbers, V as in Victor, 0016275. And purchase order number is, or it's, like it's P0709115.
If I might, the total on that, for that vendor would be $4,780.
And Pauline, what's the page number? I'm sorry, Sam, I didn't...
128.
128. Jason, how do we, do we need to take a vote on separation? Or on division?
I think the chair can divide the question without the necessity of a vote.
Okay. Let's go ahead and, and if it's all right with the motion maker, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and divide the question. So if it's all right with the motion maker and the seconder, we will approve the bill list with the exception of, how many items is it?
One, two.
Five items. And what is the grand total?
$4,780.
Okay.
Of that, that's that one vendor.
Yep. Is everyone, everyone understand the motion? Okay. So the motion on the floor is for the bill list minus the five items. Any discussion on that? Do you happen to have a total?
Not with that taken out, I'm sorry.
Why don't you do a real quick one? Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is to approve the bill list with the exception of the five items as mentioned for a grand total. Check man is Pauline. $5,693,017.32.
Correct.
Everyone clear on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Let's see, we need a motion to approve the five items before we can discuss it. Is that correct, Jason? Okay, could we have a motion, please? Okay, we have a motion and a second. And what we're dealing with are five items on page 128. If you wanna bring that up, Pauline? Thank you very much. Okay, and motion on the floor is for approval. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Quaker? Floor's yours, sir.
Thank you. Now I have, I have concerns about, about this purchase. I have concerns that this was discussed at a, a daytime council retreat, that not all council members were able to attend. It was not voted on officially. I'm not aware of minutes that refer to the purchase of, of this timer, other than the minutes that would show up tonight after the item has already been installed. The cost of the timer itself was $775, which is 16% of the overall cost, which includes mostly labor. And we, we're between a bit of a rock and a hard place, because to deny the payment of the vouchers would be to deny an honest and upstanding vendor who was hired by the city to do work. But we have been criticized for the purchase of this timer. This was not authorized by the city council in advance. And I think it's very important that everyone understand that this never came through a council agenda for a vote or a discussion. So hopefully, I don't need a $4,780 helmet to protect me from the comments which might come next, but I, I, I believe that we're probably in a position where we have no choice but to approve the vouchers. But I think the, the process by which this was obtained was wrong. It was just wrong. I would have rather we spent this 47, $4,770 of this on filling potholes in Rapid City and spend $10 on an egg timer. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman, Bonnie Peterson.
Alderman Quaker, I don't think you're gonna need a helmet to protect yourself. I agree with you that it would have been good if we had known what the upfront costs were gonna be, because it was surprising to find out after the fact that it was so expensive. However, this does not just benefit the council. It doesn't just get us out earlier. It also benefits the employees that work for the city. It saves us money on that, and it also, more importantly, benefits our constituents that they don't have to wait as long when they come up here to try to do their business. So even though I agree, the handling of it could have been a little different, I think overall, we're going to benefit from it. I think we've already seen some benefits from it. And so again, I think this will benefit our citizens, and eventually, it will pay for itself with employee, with employees having to be here last time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question, because I, like Ms. Peterson, was a bit shocked when I saw this pop up in the newspaper. And again, to reemphasize, we did not, not all of us discussed this even at a council retreat, which for some of us that were working at the time, it was pretty difficult to make. I am curious, with the procurement process, what is the dollar amount where it requires a council vote again, just for clarification?
Let's go to Pauline or Jason. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it's the bid limit with one vendor. If that's exceeded in a year, then any contracts have to be approved by the council.
And that dollar amount is?
Uh, it would depend on the item. I believe for an item like this, it'd be $15,000.
25.
Pauline tells me 25.
That got changed.
Very good. Mr. Mason, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. I guess I'll keep the rest of my comments very short, but I, I guess I also feel like it's, well, I do have actually one additional question. I just wanted to make sure. So without the council approval in this process, then it's, is it the mayor that approves that then, or?
It all, I'm gonna go to, let's go to Jeff Barbier.
Thank you, Mayor. In this situation, Alderman, the staff understood that they had direction from the council, that they were, they felt like they were fulfilling the council's wishes. I, I wasn't here at the time, but I've, I've done some research and talked to some of the staff members that were. And Kevin Tome worked with Russ Tinswald and Jim Ackland. Jim Ackland is our IT staff member that is kind of our expert on the equipment in this room. And they felt like they went back to Alpha Video and Audio, is who was used in late 2009, early 2010 for all the upgrades to the audio, video, and presentation equipment in these council chambers. That was about $150,000 expenditure on the part of the city at that point. So they felt like by going back to Alpha Audio and Video, they would get a custom timer that was integrated, and, and like Alderman Quaker said, it's true, a lot of the customization, the integration and programming specifically to make this timer work with our system is where a lot of this expense was. But Alpha Audio and Video actually traveled here onsite and had, had to do that custom programming to, to make this all work together. So staff felt like they were following directions of what the council had asked for.
Mr. Mason?
Just to clarify, because, and I, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this right, that, Mr. Barbier, you're saying that staff received direction at the council retreat without...
Well, I, I believe the process, Alderman, if I might, Mayor...
right, that, Mr. Barbier, you're saying that staff received direction at the council retreat without?
Well, I, I believe the process, Alderman, if I might, Mayor.
Please go ahead.
Was that, you know, the, the council spoke to the mayor, and of course, the staff takes direction from the mayor, but I believe that we, we felt like that direction had come from that council retreat, and we were trying to, to give the council what they wanted in a sense, and, and that was, when I interviewed staff, that was their thoughts.
Thank you. And last question, and I'll keep this brief as I can, but the point was, the essence of what was asked for was to keep time so we keep according to the minutes, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so, but one of the things, Alderman, to consider here is that this custom timer, although, you know, it may seem expensive, you know, when we start talking about having technical staff, you know, computer programmers here on-site doing this kind of work, and, and the thing that this timer does, that I've heard people say, a kitchen timer or an egg timer, the difference is this eliminates human error. When, when a council member moves from the queue to become the active speaker, the timer automatically starts. So there's really no human error or no chance for someone to say they didn't get as much time or that someone was playing favorites, or so, you know, it is really custom integrated with the system. When you move off that list of a queue to active speaker, your timer starts.
I appreciate it, Mr. Barbier. I'll just end with the last comment that I just feel like that, given the essence of this was just to keep time, and also being someone that's familiar with technology, I just, until computers start programming themselves, I, I just don't believe that we're going to ultimately eliminate human error in anything. So I, I do also concur that I wish this had been discussed a little more thoroughly with council before this had popped up in a newspaper article. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it would be appropriate to say that, Mr. Mayor, you would have approved this, correct?
I actually didn't do the approval, but I certainly passed on, there again, the thing to keep in mind is the fact that we have employees every single day making purchases, and if, Pauline, what's, what's the authority typically of an employee, of a department director?
We can sign off on anything up to $1,000, and then after that, your office also signs off on that.
Right, so, and so, there again, I believe there were, was it eight council members? Does anybody remember? How many were it?
Mr. Mayor, if you allow me to finish, then I'd appreciate it.
Sure, then I'll follow up.
Thank you. My point was, is the fact that I don't, I mean, I want to make sure that the, the record's clear about the council retreat, and because there's been, I can't make the council retreat, I can't do this, I can't do that at the council retreats. When you become elected official and your colleagues want you to get together because they have concerns about policies, procedures, those types of things, if you can't make it, that ain't my fault. I want to set the record straight on that. I took my day off, my work, to go there. This was talked about at the council retreat, understand that. This timer was talked about, not specifically this timer. If someone wants to write something in the paper and criticize me about a timer, fine, give me a phone call and we'll talk about it. But the point is, maybe, or maybe not, if the, the $5,000 timer, I'm assuming that had the council, they did talk about this, they, they wanted some sort of a timing system. The $5,000, that's probably, if we want to talk about that and have question about that, I'm okay about that because we'll have that conversation, but let's not mix the two and talk about not having minutes, not doing this, not doing that. I, I went to that council retreat, and that's one of the reasons we've been able to move this council into a more professional environment to, we had a very professional speaker who was very proficient about Robert's Rules of Orders. I'm sorry that particular people missed that, and I know I'm getting off the topic, but I think that we're off the topic. The $5,000, I'm sure that probably, you know, I was sitting on the couch and my wife looked at me and goes, "Man, you spent $5,000 on a timer, what's wrong with you?" I understand that, okay? If that's a criticism that we need to give or take, I understand that, and I don't know that anybody was shook that, and that I'm going to put that criticism right on the mayor. I'm not going to put it on Jeff or anybody like that. I think he was under instruction to try to fulfill what we thought we wanted. I was surprised by the $5,000 timer, but I sure wasn't surprised, and I sure gave up my time to come to that meeting, to make myself a better council person and understand Robert's Rules of Order. So I appreciate the time. If we want to criticize someone about the $5,000, I'm okay with that, but let's not mix the two subjects. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Thank you, Mayor. I too, I, I missed the meeting. My sister was sick, and of course, people knew why I was missing the meeting, but I too read what the meeting was about and that I got out of it, like Mr. Wyffenbach, who was there, that it was about Robert's Rules of Order, and this came about because of that. And we wanted to make the meetings more efficient, and I think it has. That's the bottom line. I think the mayor, or employees or anything, shouldn't be beaten up over a timer. I think the people writing in the paper ought to look when their meetings and how long their meetings lasted before this city council got together in this retreat and council leadership and with them moved these issues forward. Again, I think everybody's not in agreement at the cost, but there isn't any reason at this point to beat up the employees or anybody else over it when I believe $5,000 is a lot of money too, but how do you change that process at this point? Can you change the process? Can, do you want to take the timer out? Do we want to give, give, I mean, how are you going to change that process? That's, that would be my question at this point. It was about efficiency, Robert's Rules of Order, and how this was going to work for us. Again, I don't think everybody knew about what clock or how, when, why, or where, but I, I understand why it came about, and it's working. And if we can save, like Ms. Peterson said, with the employees saving on the time, you know, we limit the public to three minutes because supposedly it made our meetings more efficient. It also with the staff, again, what is that savings? What is that savings? It's not like we like to go spend $5,000 in how that process was. The labor, just so people know what we're talking about, the time code remote display was 775, the installation labor 1,965, the installation materials was 594, the training was $90, and the installation expenses was $1,356. That labor, I'm sure with, I don't know a lot about computers, but I bet you it took a lot of time just on some of the labor and hooking that up with the IT stuff. Again, almost, what, $3,000 something dollars to do that. The timer was like $775. I, if we have an explanation for that, that's fine, but again, Jeff Barbier, you gave a great explanation. Sam, that's not a bad thing what you did. You brought it up, you brought it to our attention. We understand that maybe we need to do a way of changing the process or, or when we have meetings, make them a little bit more detailed. I don't think anybody up here is saying you did anything wrong. I think it's what we're saying is that we understand this and there needs to be something different about it. We're not all in agreement of spending $5,000. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bill Waugh.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to beat a dead horse any, any longer than we need to since we're on track to get out of here fairly early.
Because of the timer.
But I got four minutes and 45 seconds, so. I will say, just to preface my comments, my memory doesn't always serve me right as I get older and, but I think the timer was actually discussed at a retreat when I was on the council four years ago. And then we did discuss it again at the previous retreat that we're talking about tonight, where not all council members were in attendance due to very good reasons, I'm sure, but there was no real vote taken, if my memory serves me right. It was kind of a discussion that this timer has been discussed in prior sessions and that it's probably time to bring the timer forward and get it installed in the council chambers, which it was. I'm in agreement with probably the other nine council members that we probably shouldn't have spent almost $5,000, but it has been spent, and if we do need to change procedures to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again, then we will go through the proper way of, of changing those procedures. But as it is, we've spent the money, it is on the bill list, and I think, I think we should pay it and, and learn from what happened to this whole process. Thank you very much, and I still have three minutes and 10 seconds left.
Geez. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to clarify some of my questions and comments real quickly. In no way am I trying to insinuate in any way that this is a problem with staff, and Mr. Barbier, I hope you didn't take that away. I, I am trying to understand the process. As Mr. Waugh clearly pointed out, there was no vote taken, this was a discussion, and I am trying to get a better understanding of how this came about and what process, and as Alderwoman Hadcock eloquently stated, that is where I'd like to head, is to look at how we can make a solution and possibly change the process. So as she brought up a, an ordinance tonight in dealing with due notification, I would like to see some due notification here on the council and be notified of things like this. Lastly, I would like to also additionally say that I'm, I'm happy to see that the timer finally started working with Alderman Bill Waugh, as I noticed that both with Alderman Wyffenbach and Alderwoman Hadcock, that it sat there at five minutes for approximately seven minutes straight. Thank you.
Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Okay, thank you. Having been at the retreat, I just want to say that nobody was more surprised at how much this ended up costing. We had speculated it'd be about $5, $700, which we were probably right on for the actual device, and, but I do very much, even though if it had been put to a vote, I would have voted against it, I do very much though appreciate the mayor and the employees of trying to, you know, do what the council had asked them to do, and because the council, while we were there, even though it was an official vote, we did say that we wanted a timer and that we could, you know, follow more Robert's Rules of Order and do a better job. So I do appreciate the mayor and the employees for moving forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think my colleagues are fully aware that if I go over the length of that timer, it ain't going to stop me, but.
Turn your mic off.
Now I lost my train of thought.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, I'm not feeling well, pretty well under the weather tonight, I lost my train of thought, but I just, oh, I guess I wanted to give warning to our, our, our council leadership moving forward. When, when you're up to bat to approve someone's trip somewhere without getting full council approval, this council voted on it, that same process that we're talking about here tonight. So just to let everybody know, it's, it's in the works that that's going to happen, and, and I think that maybe at some point they need to revisit that if we feel that this is going to be issues moving forward, so, thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? And Pauline, the dollar amount is 47, is it 80? Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Was there a no? Did I, was there a no anywhere? I didn't hear one. Nope, no no's. No no's. Mr. Green?
We do need an executive session for the purposes permitted by SDCL-1-25-2.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a motion?
No move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into executive session for the purposes permitted by SDCL-1-1-25-2, and Jason promises it won't take more than five minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We'll take a motion, come on to executive session. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd ask the council to direct the city attorney to agree to waive the timeliness argument in the first litigation matter discussed in the executive session.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Mayor, I'd ask the council to direct the city attorney's office and staff to prepare any necessary agreements to implement the settlement discussed in the second litigation matter.
Motion and second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Motion to adjourn?
No move.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone.